I want to welcome you to the 1,221st regular meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council. And the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. Planning Commission holds the only public hearings on a request for preliminary plats and/or vacating petitions, which is not relevant for tonight's agenda, but the Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or site plan is denied tonight, also which is not relevant to tonight's agenda, the petitioner has 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions that are adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Montgelo's absent, Mrs. De Naro is running late.
Yes, that's our understanding.
Mr. Dros.
Here.
Ventura is absent, Karen Magno is here, Chairman Wilshaw.
Is here. And also with us tonight, we have Jacob Uhazi, and we have Stephanie Reese, both from our Planning Department. They will be giving some background information on our agenda item, and they may have, we may have some questions for them along the meeting as we go. With that, we're going to dive into our agenda, and we have one item of interest on tonight's agenda. This is a pending item, which is for items that have been discussed at length at prior meetings. The public hearing has been held on this item, so we're not going to conduct a public hearing again, as this is a pending item. Mr. Secretary, would you like to read item number one?
Yes. Petition 2024-08-01-04 submitted by Skilken Gold on behalf of Sheets under Section 13.15 of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended, requesting to rezone the property 37355 Eight Mile Road located on the southeast corner of Eight Mile Road and Newburg Road in the northwest corner of Section 5 from C1 Local Business District to C2 General Business District.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Uhazi, would you like to tell us any new information that's come in on this item?
We just have a few things. I just want to reiterate that the zoning change would facilitate the development of a Sheets gas station, convenience store, and restaurant on the location southeast corner of Eight Mile and Newburg Road. The area to be rezoned is about 79,880 square feet, or 1.83 miles, with 269 feet along Eight Mile Road and 285 feet along Newburg. The surrounding neighborhoods, as we saw before, to the north is the city of Farmington Hills and Childtime of Northville. To the west, across Newburg, is Greenmead Historical Park, which is zoned PL. And to the south and east is Whispering Willow's Golf Course, also zoned PL. The only major update to the plan that we have since the last public hearing would be that the petitioner has reexamined the drive-through layout that they presented at the original meeting. They took into some of the considerations that the Planning Commission mentioned, and are reexamining the layout of the drive-through to move it to the western side of the building to reduce traffic conflicts. And they also explained that they are open to adding a merge lane across Eight Mile Road into Farmington Hills, understanding that it would take a lot more study and work with surrounding communities. But those are the updates that I have for, since the last public hearing. And then, we've also received many residents' responses that you have received in your e-packet.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Uhazi. This item was tabled at a prior meeting. Is there a Commissioner willing to remove this item from the table so we can discuss it?
Mr. Chair, make that motion.
Mr. Karen Magno has made a motion to remove from the table. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Long. There is a motion to remove this item from the table by Karen Magno and Long. If there's no objection, we'll show.
Yeah. We're in here. We're in here.
I will do my best, but realize that we're conducting a meeting. I can't have people yelling out at me, please. So thankfully, the air conditioner is starting to quiet down. So if that's, if there's no objection, we're going to remove this item from the table, showing five. Four. Or four, excuse me, to do that. And then, there's no objection? All right, this item's been removed from the table. Is there any questions for the Planning Staff from any of the Commissioners? Based on the presentation? There's no questions? Our petitioner isn't in the audience tonight. They are free to come forward and speak to this item, and let us know if there's anything new that they would like to tell us about this petition. Before we get too deep into this, though, again, I want to remind folks in our audience, some of whom may have not been at our prior meeting, that we have met on this item before. We did conduct a public hearing where public comments were taken. We are not going to do that again tonight, because this is a pending item. This item has been discussed at length, and we are prepared to vote on this item tonight. That being said, I do at least want to explain the process that, because there may be people who have questions who weren't here at the last meeting, and what we're considering tonight is a rezoning petition for this property. It's a rezoning from a C1 to C2 zoning, and our focus tonight is going to be on that rezoning of this property. There's going to be limited discussion about the actual use of the property in terms of what Sheets is going to put on the property and how it's going to look, the site plan, those types of things. That comes at a later process after the zoning is dealt with. Again, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we are going to make a recommendation either approving or denying a recommendation for that zoning, which will then go on to City Council. City Council will then conduct their own public hearing, and they'll make a decision as to what they want to do with the zoning. Once that occurs, if they want to move forward with the zoning, if it goes that direction, then a site plan would be brought back to us at a later time, and that would be discussed. If not, it would stop at that part of the process. So with that, I just wanted to give a little background information, and I'll now start with the petitioner. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for having us back. My name is Drew Miller with Skilken Gold, address is 4270 Morris Road, Columbus, Ohio. So we appreciate coming back, and like I'd mentioned earlier, you know, there's a few items, concerns that we heard last time that we felt were appropriate to address tonight. And I just wanted to take a step back to and explain a little bit more about how we got here, you know, for this new location. Mr. Uhazi, if you could go to the next side, please. So yes, everybody's familiar with this location. There's some things I would like to point out, and I'm sure it's going to be a little bit too small for you to see on this screen here, but I want to talk a little bit more about this location specifically. So this is a 1.83 commercially developed acreage at this location. It's currently occupied by 17,000 square feet of commercial space. Previous users, tenants in this location have been, most recently, the Rite Aid Pharmacy. Historically, it's been used as realty services, insurance providers, and a golf shop, and I think an arcade is what somebody had told me. I really want to talk about this intersection. The topic of the traffic in the traffic study came up a couple times in the last meeting and in the study sessions. So we did do a traffic impact study that's been provided to the City Engineers' Office, and they have reviewed that traffic study. Their recommendation was that no improvements should be made. We had originally talked about some ideas involving a de-acceleration lane at both access points that we had proposed. After discussing that with the City Engineers' Office, they didn't think that that would be appropriate. I'd also like to talk about the current existing traffic that's located on these thoroughfares here. So Eight Mile Road, according to MDOT's SEMCOG website, you can see there, east of Newburg, there's 19,900, and that is average daily traffic. Newburg is a little bit more, there's 24,000 cars. If you look at the other intersections around the city, specifically where the type of use C2 zoning is located at, these numbers are very consistent with what you would see at those C2 locations. So that's one reason we feel this location's appropriate. Now, there was also a lot of discussion about why this location. I'm going to try and answer that a little bit as we continue through these slides here. The other thing I'd like to point out is the traffic signal at this location is managed and operated by Wayne County. So we are submitting the traffic study to them for their comments and feedback. Based on the City Engineers' responses, we don't feel there's going to be any issues. We did propose some signal timing adjustments to just make traffic flow here a little bit better. So we're looking forward to seeing those comments from Wayne County, but we're not anticipating any major mitigation measures that they would require. Mr. Chair, you did recognize that we had discussed potentially extending the merge lane that would be north of Eight Mile Road. There's access to a daycare there off of Halsted, and anybody familiar with the intersection knows that there's a merge lane there. We had talked about maybe extending that merge lane, because historically, there has been accidents there. To my knowledge and from the City Engineers' Office, they had told us that the right-turn lane going north on Newburg, I'm sorry, the right-turn lane on Newburg, if you're heading northbound, used to be a through lane as well. So there was two through lanes, and I don't know exactly when they changed it, but they changed it to a right-turn only with one single through lane. City Engineers' Office had communicated to us that there was, that caused a lot of accidents, because there was backups then on Halsted. So that was, I think, part of the reason why, you know, they didn't recommend any other mitigation measures there. So, yeah, so, Mr. Uhazi, if you could go to the next side, please. So, and just to step back here briefly, I did want to just cover some of the, where we've been and what we've done so far in the city of Livonia. So we were here, as I'm sure a lot of you recall, in January with a different location. This was at Newburg and Five Mile Road, just a few miles south on Newburg. Some of the reasons stated for that denial involved contradictory land use and inconsistent land use with the master plan, as well as concerns over floodway that existed to the east of that property, as well as the comment that, you know, that intersection was already well-served with gas stations. So again, this just, this helps me explain why we settled on this new location at Eight Mile. Obviously, things like traffic count and safety, you know, crime reports, we take all that into consideration when Sheets is looking at a location. But the best thing we can do is hear from folks like you. So we heard you. We came with this location that we thought was great, and, you know, we heard you. And that really helped guide us and dictate where we would look for a new opportunity to come into Livonia. So I just want to make sure I covered that, because that had a big factor in the new location that we're proposing. So, you know, keeping with this future, or the city of Livonia future land use map here, I did want to touch on some of the items that were addressed last month in regards to the denial. So we did hear, you know, contradicting inconsistent land use, that was another item similar to what we heard in January. So what, this is what we're trying to understand here, is that the contradictory land use, we don't really feel is appropriate. Along Eight Mile, you'll see plenty of commercial uses. There's residential, too, but there's also commercial, especially if you factor in how major this thoroughfare is. We feel that this rezone to C2 is very appropriate. As far as inconsistent land use, I'm not really sure I understand that either. The golf course that's located directly to our south is a commercial use. I know it's zoned parks and recreation, and everybody thinks, you know, I'm a golfer, golf is a recreational sport, but it's also a high-traffic commercial use. I'm pretty sure they have over 6,000 gallons of underground storage fuel tanks as well on that site. So it's very much a commercial use, even though it's zoned as parks and recreation, and that's the master plan as well. As far as, you know, rezoning to C2 adversely altering the character of the area, we don't feel that's appropriate either. As mentioned, the site used to be a Rite Aid with a pharmacy. A pharmacy is the type of use that customers will come and make a special trip just to go to that pharmacy. A convenience store and fuel station is not that. We're capturing pass-by traffic. The drivers on the road are already there, and they're stopping at a Sheetz store because it's convenient. And again, that's another reason why we've chosen this location. Finally, the last one I wanted to address here was the proposed change is not needed to develop the property. We've done a lot of investigation on this property, and there are certainly some engineering challenges, but we feel it is appropriate for Sheets to come in here at this location, and the change is needed for Sheets. We know from our studies that the building has some engineering issues, and we do not expect another commercial user to be able to come in here and at this location and put up the capital that's needed to remediate the soils where most of the engineering issues So just to kind of recap here, this is the location. This is actually the new site plan. I wasn't going to get too much into the detail, but you can see there, we have adjusted the drive-through. I think what's really notable about what we're proposing in our commercial use is, yes, the C2 is more intense, but it's already a commercial use, and we're reducing the amount of access curb cuts that are along Newburg. So this is going to help in the traffic situation. As I mentioned before, the traffic counts are very consistent with what you would see at C2 locations. This is a main thoroughfare, and the traffic is there, and there is no other gas stations within close proximity. So as I mentioned before...
Everyone, please be quiet. Let the petitioner speak.
As I mentioned before, part of the denial for our previous location was that the area was already well-served. This intersection is not well-served, and that's what kind of led us here. Finally, as I mentioned, you know, as far as inconsistent land use, we're abutting a commercial use. It's a golf course, even though it's, you know, considered parks and rec. Finally, you know, what we're proposing here, we do feel is harmonious and compatible with the current use. Like I mentioned, it's a Rite Aid. The final thing I'd like to mention here, and you can see it pretty clearly, is the tree buffering that exists around this site. There is no residential immediately adjacent to our site. We have, we've found this location because it was appropriate. It has the traffic volume, it's already commercial, and it's very low impact to the neighbors. And that's why we feel this is appropriate. The topic of the creek came up last time as well, and I do want to just reinforce the fact that we did a wetland delineation. We walked the site with an Eagle representative, and we have made adjustments to our site plan to stay as far away from the wetlands as possible. And we don't anticipate having any major permits with Eagle. We do anticipate having a minor impact permit just for the construction of the store. So we've really done our homework on this site. We feel it's very appropriate to rezone this to C2 based on everything I've said here, and, you know, we're looking forward to moving on to the next step, so thank you. We're here for questions.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from the Commission for Mr. Miller, or any of his representatives? Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You touched on something that I'd like you to speak a little further to, your interactions with Eagle and the ramifications of the, of the development on the creek that runs in front of the seventh green there, stormwater runoff, safety on the fuel tanks. Please expound a little more.
Sure. Eagle has very stringent standards. A lot of the development work we do is in Ohio, and I would applaud Eagle for what they do. I would also applaud Sheets for what they do. Before we started looking at any locations, we got together with the entire Eagle team in Lansing, Michigan, and talked about what Sheets' plans were for the future, and we made sure that they were going to meet every standard. In fact, they exceed a lot of those standards, and we have Sheets' representatives here that can get into more detail about, you know, how they, how they do that and how they manage that. But they have a state-of-the-art fuel system, everything's monitored with those USTs. Modern construction practices take extreme caution when you're next to a creek here. And so stormwater capture and runoff is very critical, especially on a fuel site. We acknowledge that, and yeah, there's potential for an accident here, you know, here or there. There's a way to mitigate that, and we capture that. There's oil-water separators, and they monitor it and maintain it throughout the year. Last month, Mr. Sawicki had mentioned, you know, all of their stores are non-franchised. They're all independently owned and operated by the Sheets family, and so they have complete control over maintaining those systems. So I'm not aware of any issues they've experienced here in Michigan, and like I said, we work very closely with Eagle in every jurisdiction we're in to make sure we're doing it right.
Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Dro, Droz, I'm drawing a blank there. Mr. Droz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Picking up on Commissioner Long's questions about stormwater, the current site today, built in 96, what, what measures for stormwater? Does that have any sort of detention on-site currently?
John, are you familiar?
Not that we're aware of.
Okay. And so... I do know they have a septic tank underneath part of that parking lot.
Okay. And then, so assuming this is going to be a full reconstruction, you would follow the Wayne County ordinance, which would include peak flow, stormwater detention, water quality, like you mentioned?
Certainly. Yeah, and, Mr. Uhazi, I'm not sure if any of those plans made it over in that capacity yet.
I don't think so.
But yes, that's something we get in front of early. It's something we need to make sure we can do before we start spending money and getting too far down the road. So that's a very important part of our due diligence process, is to make sure that we're going to be able to have the utilities here at this location, and stormwater is such an important one, especially here in Michigan.
Anything else, Mr. Droz?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
Sir, you talked about capital improvement for this property, for the building. What type of money are you talking about putting in this property?
I'm sorry?
What type of money are you talking about putting in this property to bring it up to standards?
I, you know, I don't know if I could answer specifically. We do have Sheets' representatives here, but if you're looking for just like a construction estimate, I would say maybe in the eight to $10 million range, $10 million dollars of construction.
Ten million to demolish what's there, refurb it, and build something new.
That's correct. This is a little bit more of an expensive site for us, because the soils are very poor here. Historically, this, there used to be a house here a really long time ago, early 1900s. There was a pool, a backyard pool there at one point. It's, it almost feels like this, what exists there today was built on topsoil, so we'll be removing that topsoil. We'll be putting in some engineered fill to make sure everything's going to, you know, be up to standards and last for a long time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Any other questions for the petitioner? There's no other questions? Then we are ready for a motion. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair. Karen. Karen?
Folks in our audience, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, we are not going to have audience discussion during this meeting, because this item has been discussed at length at prior meetings.
Have a question.
So questions are the same thing as a discussion. What I'll try to do is, because if I get into a question-and-answer session, we're going to be here for a half an hour answering questions, but...
Can I just show you the records of the accidents from the Farmington Hills?
If you have information that you'd like to submit, you can hand it to our, to Ms. Reese, and she will pass it along to us. We also make sure that all information that's given to us is part of the record for this meeting, which will go on to City Council. We did receive a number of, and I did want to reiterate, we did receive a number of emails, we did receive petitions, and we did receive other information from a number of residents, which we appreciate. Those are all in our packet. We've had a chance to read those, and those, again, will be tied to this petition and continue on as it goes to City Council with either an approving or denying recommendation. So we do appreciate that information, and...
Is there a reason why Livonia wouldn't give me the records? I wouldn't have the freedom to...
I can't answer that question for you. I can't answer that question for you. I'm not the person who gives the records.
Fine, thank you.
Could you answer one more question, sir?
What's your question, sir? Please come forward, because we can't hear anybody else.
I'm sorry.
What's your question? Sir?
As a Commission, do you have the right to allow people to make presentations if you choose as a group at this time?
On pending items, there is an opportunity, if the Commission wishes to open the meeting to public comments, they can do that. It requires a unanimous vote by the Commission.
It seems to me that if you allow the petitioner to give additional information, you should also allow citizens to do the same.
Well, sir, again, as I, as I mentioned, we had a public hearing on this item. We gave an opportunity for anyone who wishes to come to that meeting to come and speak on this item. There's been a sign at that location for a number of weeks announcing the dates of these meetings, and we did hear from a number of residents at our previous meeting. We also always accept communication by email or in writing at any time prior to this meeting. We've accepted it at this meeting, and we'll continue to accept it after this meeting as it moves on to City Council. Remember that we are making a recommendation to the City Council. This is not the final decision on this item. This is a recommendation. City Council will be making the final decision. So that's where you're, regardless of what happens, whether you're for or against it, or whether this gets approved or denied, that's where you want to follow this item on to. And you will have an opportunity at that meeting, at City Council, there will be a public hearing. You'll have an opportunity to speak, you'll have an opportunity to present additional information. So there'll be many, many opportunities. I'm not, I'm not going to take any more questions, because, ma'am, please, ma'am, please have a seat. I'm not taking any more questions.
Why don't you just say this?
I, I told you that if I, if I take one question, we're going to end up here for a half an hour taking questions.
My point is, this says to me...
Ma'am, please stop talking.
...to say something at this meeting.
Ma'am, this is not an opportunity for you to speak right now.
That's what this paper says. That you said to my home. It says it right on the paper.
Public hearing.
This is not a public hearing. This is a, this is not a public hearing.
I attended in October, and I had to leave, and I spoke to the officer out there, and before I left, you said that October 22nd would be a public hearing. My husband and I were here.
And this paper says that.
You can look at the minutes and see what I said. They're word-for-word.
Let me submit what you said to my home. This is what you guys said to me. It says that I want to speak. Anybody there wants to speak to the Planning Commission?
Feel, feel free to hand that to our clerk.
You know, out of courtesy, you should at least give us 10 minutes for...
Half these people didn't even know about the meeting the last time.
I, I understand that.
You said to my house, though.
I understand that.
And for us not to be able to say anything is not right, when you send this to my home.
If, if there is, please, we don't need a group coming down to the podium, because again, I'm not going to be allowing speaking unless there's a majority or a majority of people in the Commission wishing to have public comments at this meeting. Is there anyone wishing to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question about your opening or not. You indicated that this was about...
Let's ask everybody to hold out for a second.
Please hang on just one second.
So this was sent out by the City Department. This is in here, obviously.
All right. Okay. All right. I think it's fair. Okay.
Maybe I want to discuss it further down here.
So, so what was presented to us was a letter that was sent to one of the residents stating that a public hearing will take place on October 22nd by the Planning Commission. That is incorrect, but that's what was... That is incorrect, but that's what was... Please don't speak over me.
Hang on a minute.
The agenda, it says pending item. The, so because they were sent out a letter stating that this is a public hearing, if the commission is, is willing to accept that this is our mistake and people came here with the intention or the thought that they would be able to speak, we could open up the floor to allowing public comment, but it will be limited to two minutes per person.
I'd go less than that, Mr. Chairman.
Because we have heard these...
We've heard this. I would, I would, I would be in favor of opening it up for one-minute comments.
Is, is that acceptable to the rest of the commission?
And that, and that's due to the error in this, in this memo that was sent out to the residents, right?
Correct.
Or perceived error.
Correct.
I'll, I'll support that.
I think, I think that, that'd be the, the correct thing to do. All right. Is anyone else, is everyone okay with that? Got, we got enough now, it's all right. All right. If you'd like to speak, please come forward to the podium. We need your name and address so we know who we're speaking to and please restrict your comments to one minute, please.
Good evening. My name's Willard Lindley.
Good evening, sir.
And I'm a Livonia resident, have been for about twenty years. Professionally, I'm an attorney and when Michigan required it, I was also a professional community planner.
Uh-huh.
It was at a time when Michigan required a licensing examiner, pretty much similar.
Uh-huh.
You opened your comments this, this evening regarding zoning and that was all you were going to be addressing.
Correct.
This is a zoning application from local community, local retail, to C-two, then with a variance for C-three.
That's...
Basically highway commercial in a C-two zone and that's authorized under the zoning ordinance. My concern here is that this is going directly from a very low-density development, recreation on the south side of Eight Mile and residential on the north side of Eight Mile. And I know you don't like to talk about what's on Eight Mile on the other side. You can't ignore it. It is residential. Livonia has adopted a land use plan and a zoning ordinance and it's why our property values are where they are. They're very good.
Sir, that's time.
The land use plan and the zoning ordinance...
That's time.
Sir, you've had a minute.
Are, are outstanding.
Sir, your, your, your time is done.
I, you said I had two minutes.
I said one minute.
My introduction was a minute.
I, I know it was.
Okay, may I submit something in writing?
Yes, you may.
From this point?
Definitely.
Because this was at a public hearing, how do I do that? Please provide specific instructions because I don't want that to get lost.
You can send it to the city hall. You can send it to the planning department.
Planning department?
Yes.
To the director of the planning department, do I reference this as a, an item?
Yes. You can, you just reference to the Eight Mile and Newburgh rezoning of this property. They'll, they'll know.
Use the rezoning number in the application?
You can, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Rolco.
My name is Greg Rolco. I live at three six one, one six Fairway Drive in Livonia. I took the time since this last meeting, I took the time to go to every resident in Gulf Ridge Village. There are a hundred and eighteen. I talked to a hundred and ten. Ninety-five percent of them said no. Okay? If you're going to put something in an area, what's the first thing you do? Is you talk to the people that are going to be most affected. We're going to be most affected. Okay? We, you talk about, you downplay runoff. It could be runoff. That's where we get our water from, to water our lawns, from those ponds. Let's not forget that. Okay? And the biggest thing here is that this is a quality of life for us, a quality of life issue. The people around our, our subdivision and I might add Willow Woods, which is on the south side of, of Whispering Willows, they too did a petition as well in their, in their subdivision.
Sir, that's time.
And the same percentages came. Ninety-five percent said no. So if you ignore the people most affected, you're not doing your job.
Mr. Rolco, we're all set. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hi, I'm Dave Hall. I live at three seven, three hundred West Eight Mile. I live directly across this monstrosity that's going to propose to be built here. You can say what you want. This is a truck stop. They are all truck stops. I, my bedroom, I have a big, beautiful window in my bedroom. It's at the front of my house. Twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, I'm going to have lights shining in my room. I will not be able to sleep. And this gentleman, as much as I respect him, he calls Whispering Willows a commercial property? No, it's not. It's recreational. This is not commercial. If it was, I'd love to have my property zone commercial. It's just not going to, this cannot happen. I've brought reports from Farmington Hills. I went to the Freedom from Information Act. There's over thirteen accidents on this corner, just in Farmington Hills, at Farmington Hills, probably twice as many with Livonia. And I'm going to have Livonia's record.
Sir, it's time.
All right. We got, thank you, sir.
No, thank you, guys.
Good evening.
Michael Kenny, three five, two two three Pembroke in Livonia. We live about a half mile from this site. It's very important that we take into account that Livonia is one of only two communities in the nation that has three golf courses owned by the city. And then we have Greenmead across the street from that. So that's a valuable property that ought to be thought through by the planning committee in a way that improves that area, you know, as opposed to, as I understand, a twenty-four-hour truck stop being located there. So I urge the committee not to change the zoning. The zoning is there for very wise reasons and we have valuable property related to that. If, you know, this is the kind of property where people would want to build condominiums to overlook the golf course as opposed to a twenty-four-hour truck stop. So please take all that into account and it impacts us dramatically.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
My name is David Sharp and I've distributed to you a statement that I prepared. I understand a new subdivision is going to be built at the end of Lujan in Livonia where a church exists now. This is going to be another community that will be negatively affected by this possible decision, although Mr. Wilshaw made the assumption that it was going to pass and I hope he is wrong. But let me say, I thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. And I think in my statement, if you read it carefully, you will see how much I care about Livonia and how much I love the area where I live. And I hope you'll consider that. I'm a seventy-eight-year-old former teacher and master gardener who developed the gardens at the Finnish Center where many Livonia people are members and also use our gardens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Linda Allen. I live at three seven, two zero three Whitetail Court in Farmington Hills. It's a brand-new subdivision of seventeen home sites just north of Eight Mile and Halsted. Key, two questions. First of all, I guess this really put some thought with the Sheets individuals. What's the marketing concept on volume of this place? What marketing studies were done? Was that presented to any of you on this planning commission? That's really food for thought. And we've been around all the communities, talking to people, going to doors, writing emails. I'm on the HOA of my subdivision. And in all honesty, no one's going to be going to Sheets after eight P.M. or nine P.M. This is a very low-key community with a lot of upcoming families and retirees. And so I, that's why it's very important to think about, really, what are those projections and who did marketing studies?
It's time.
All right, you're out of time, ma'am. Thank you for coming. Hello, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Fay Nummer. I'm here representing business members that are part, part of the MENA American Chamber of Commerce. Not only does this affect residents in your area, it also affects the businesses in the area. The entire supply chain is affected. This is cannibalizing revenue as well as misappropriating the, misallocating the resources away from existing gas station owners who have lived in the area and contributed significantly to the region for many years. We're not for, we're not opposed to competition. What we're opposed to is unfair competition. The Sheets business model, they enter an area and they are able to sell eighty-eight octane with their underground tanks and that puts existing business owners at an automatic disadvantage because they don't have the same capabilities. That is fifty to sixty cents less per gallon on average compared to other business owners that are in the area. So automatically they're put at a disadvantage. The gentleman that men, mentioned the underground, underground tank leakage...
Ma'am, can you summarize?
That is, that is an EPA concern. Not only is the EPA scrutinizing Sheets, there's also scrutiny from the Equal Employment Commission with respect to their unethical hiring practices where they have...
Ma'am, you're running out of time.
I understand.
Thank you for your comments, though.
I appreciate it. But just taking into consideration the impact to the local community as well as the residents.
Got it.
But thank you for, for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi, good evening.
My name's Julianne Mahalas Levine. I'm a resident in Halsted Hollow in Farmington Hills.
Welcome.
Just north of the, northeast of the Eight Mile-Newburgh intersection. I would just like to offer, just driving through the area, and certainly, clearly I haven't studied it and, and, but there is other properties out there. There's at Six Mile and two seventy-five, which is all commercial, open land space. There's property for sale at the Seven Mile and two seventy-five interchange, property for sale. So there's, that are clearly in more commercial areas than the intersection. So for Sheets to consider this particular property versus some of the other areas that are in the commercial areas of those exits off the highway, that's only something that I would at least put forth that maybe as a planning commission should be considered.
Well, we appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Thomas Purna. I live Farmington Hills, two one one five four Prestwick.
Good evening.
At eighth of a mile, just north of this location. I can sit on my deck and I can hear the traffic on Eight Mile right now. I can hear when they stop, when they take off. I can hear the loud cars. You're going to put this business there that's going to bring transient people coming off of the expressway with their trucks at night. When those air, air brakes go on and off, I'm going to hear those. I won't be able to sleep. And I have a beautiful home in Farmington Hills that I worked hard to get and you guys are going to put this kind of business next to my house. I don't think so.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening, sir.
On Sumner, twenty thousand and eight Parker. Yeah, a couple of things. I can't believe that they don't, they're not going to give them a decel lane. If you drive down Eight Mile, it should be called Eight Mile Highway. People drive so fast through there, especially that intersection. So that's, that's one reason why I don't think you should go in there. Another one is the, that property, I believe, is, isn't it like the north half, like twelve to fifteen feet higher than the south half? So you, you try to get tanker trucks in there with a lot of traffic, especially in the wintertime? I think there could be some, some accidents going on in there. And is the Myers at Seven Mile and Farmington still going in?
Yes.
Are they going to build a gas station there also?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We got one, one more.
Sure, yeah, certainly.
Like, take, take a minute, second.
That's perfectly okay.
I own the property and I'm not selling the property to Sheets, I'm leasing it to them. I have confidence in what they're going to do. But I hear the word truck stop come up. They're not building a truck stop. They have a truck stop at Metro Airport. Trucks will not fuel here, cannot fuel here and cannot pull up and there's no room for them. And the same thing I hear from all the people. I took notes at the last meeting. They all complain about traffic on Halsted Northbound because it goes to two lanes. How is that a problem of Livonia? I drive down Newburgh Road every single day. On Newburgh Road, sometimes twice a day on Newburgh Road. I never get backed up. I never have a problem driving through. I drive on Eight Mile, Eight Mile is busy. Eight Mile got paved a hundred years ago. Eight Mile was put there before it was the city of Livonia, when it was a township. And the people that bought homes there knew there was traffic when they bought those homes on Eight Mile Road. We're not putting a superhighway. We're putting a gas station in a place where you can get a cup of coffee or a sandwich.
All right, sir, that's time.
We're not, okay, we're not putting a Cedar Point there, bringing busloads of kids from Indiana.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Everyone, please, please have respect for our other views. Obviously, the majority of people here, we know, are against it, but other people are welcome to their opinions as well. Hi, good evening, ma'am.
I'm Karen Sutherland. I live at three seven, three hundred West Eight Mile, right across from the old Rite Aid. I lived there when that house was, it was a house, when the doctor owned it with the pool behind it, when it was a two-lane road. That, it's always been a traffic problem. I went out and I videoed a horrible traffic accident last week on the rainy day at nine o'clock at night. The car was totaled. There's traffic there all the time. When it's not, when it's not going this way, it's coming into my driveway because it's all backed up. So I constantly have cars in and out of my driveway because I have a circle driveway. There is no room for more cars there. And for them to come in and out of that, it would be Sheets, it would be horrible for my house and anybody else that's going on to Eight Mile and Halsted. And he has a million-dollar reason to sell that place or to lease that place. And if I wanted to, I would go commercial with mine, but it's not appropriate in the area. So I just want you to take that in consideration with the traffic.
Definitely. Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, ma'am.
Hi, Patty Rigio, three seven, two oh four Breton Drive, president of the Willow Woods HOA. We submitted our, all of our information of the fifty-one homes that I pounded the pavement to go talk to, forty-five are adamantly against this. Also, you tabled this at the last meeting. My understanding was you had six people in, in attendance. Three were in favor, three were against.
Correct.
So you had six, but now you only have five. How can you make a vote with less people?
We have a quorum.
Okay.
So we do have enough to make a vote. Thank you. Hi, good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Jim Keterba. I'm a resident of Livonia for thirty-five years at least. The only thing I have to say is, as I watch these things happen, normally by the time the proposal gets to this point, it just seems like the decision has been made and we've, personally, I feel like I'm wasting your time and mine at this point. It just, when it gets to this point and people come before you, I don't get a sense that you listen. That's the first thing. My second point is the fact that where in Livonia's city charter, does it state that we have to supply goods and services to Farmington or Farmington Hills? We have strip malls, we have gas stations, we have liquor stores. Farmington, Farmington Hills, next to their residential suburbs, you don't find gas stations, you don't find liquor stores. But they run down Newburgh at fifty and fifty-five miles an hour, they gather their goods and then they go to where they live, which they voted against this. So I'd like you to just think about it.
Sir, you've run out of time, sir. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. I think there's one more person. Yeah. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Orin Mizoni. I live at three seven, five, three one Dungarren Court in North Hill, which is actually Farmington which is actually Farmington Hills, where Kitty Corner and Meadowbrook Hills from the development. Other than the fact of all the things that have been brought up so far, the noise, the traffic, and so on, this is a very unique corner for Livonia, okay? If you drive down, going east on Eight Mile, you're coming down that hill, you're, you have Greenmead on the right, okay? It gives you a certain feeling, okay, about the area and about the city. You come back, you turn right on there, you're there, you're, you're going back through Greenmead, you've got the golf course on the left. I mean, it's just, the whole area is just a very, very nice, comfortable place. And I think it sets the mode for the whole city and why people live there. I've been at my address for 45 years, so we've seen a lot of changes there. I'm also a property owner in Livonia. It's a great city-
It's time.
And I hope you would just take a look at the aesthetics that's gonna happen if you put a gas station there.
We understand, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Long.
I'll make a motion that we cut off public comment after this last person in line behind this gentleman.
There's one gal behind-
Yeah.
Definitely, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hi, Kenneth Moore, 20185 Ellen Drive, Livonia.
Thank you.
Just looking at the zoning change, not the particular person who's asking for it, if you were to change from C1 to C2, just going through the Livonia PDF on this, I could see that once this business failed, you could put in pawn shops, payday lenders, auto paint shops, massage establishments, hotels, radio and TV antennas. I don't think we really wanna change the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Hi, good evening, ma'am.
Hi, good evening, my name is Colleen Powers, I live at 20938 Deerfield. I'd like to echo a lot of what Mr. Mizoni just spoke about, the character of that corner and what is there, and having the green space, if you will, of the golf course and of the homes in the residential area around there, as well as all the beautiful property and historic nature of Greenmead. To put a gas station on that corner completely changes the character of that area. And we have two gas stations a mile down the road at 8 and Hagerty, one at 7 and Farmington, and three in the other direction down Eight Mile, at 2 at 8 and Farmington, and one less than a mile away at Kroger at Gill. We are not lacking for gas stations in our area. And I would hate to see the city destroy the look of that area. I have two daughters in their 20s, married, looking to move in to homes around there. That's where they've been looking, but not if something like this is going to be in their backyard.
It's time.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, well, let you be the last person, and then we're done.
Good evening, my name is Claudia Lindley, and I live at 20218 Edgewood Avenue in Livonia. We've been there for about 20 years, and I agree with everybody about changing the, from low density to high density is a really bad decision. We used to live in Dearborn Heights, we moved about 20 years ago, right off of Ford Road. Talk about high density. It was so nice to move to Livonia, to drive down Hagerty, I mean, Newburgh, drive up around Eight Mile in front of the golf course, even the cemetery. I mean, it's beautiful. And a Sheets gas station with a big red sign on 275, I, I think it's really a bad choice.
All right, thank you for your comments, appreciate that. All right, at this point, we're gonna close the comments. We do apologize to the residents who misunderstood that this was a pending item. Hopefully, at least giving another opportunity for some folks to speak on this item helps with that. We did hear all your comments from our previous meeting, we have heard your comments from tonight's meeting, we have numerous emails and petitions, so we do have a lot of input from the residents, which we'd appreciate. Mr. Long?
Mr. Chair, if I may, the one gentleman spoke that by the time it gets to this point, that it's a done deal, and nothing could be further from the truth. This is the first bite at the apple for this. This comes before us for a zoning issue. We're going to make a recommendation to City Council. There will be another public hearing at City Council, where you will have the opportunity to speak if you want. You will be able to speak with the City Council members about it, if you'd like to. From there, it goes, if it gets approved, then it goes into a site plan process. It will come back to the Planning Commission for a site plan. Again, there will be a public hearing, and there will be another opportunity to speak on it. And then from here, it will go back to City Council again. So there are plenty of chances for you to discuss this with your appointed commissions and your elected officials, all right? So nothing could be further from the truth than that this is a done deal. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Is there any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners? If not, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kara Magno, are you?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Droes.
Okay, I'd like to offer approving resolution that the request to rezone the property at 37355 East Eight Mile Road from C1 local business to C2 general business district is hereby approved, subject to the City Council approval for the following reasons. Point one, the zoning change to Z2 would be comparable and compatible in harmony with the area surrounding land uses and zoning. That the proposed C2 zoning is consistent with longstanding commercial use of this property. The proposed C2 zoning will allow for the development of the subject property in a manner that is consistent with its size and location, and will bring additional commercial services and retail to this part of the city. And point number four, that the proposed zoning change represents a reasonable and logical plan for the subject property that adheres to sound land use planning principles.
Thank you, Mr. Droes, is there a support?
I'll support.
There's a motion to approve by Mr. Droes, supported by Mrs. De Naro. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, I'm gonna pass the gavel. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wilshaw.
Yes, I'd like to speak on this item. This is something I don't do very often in sharing meetings, but as a chairman, I'm not allowed to speak prior to votes because I don't want to influence any of my fellow commissioners in making their decisions. So I have passed the gavel, so I am no longer responsible for this item. But a lot of comments have been made, that residents have made, and I wanna address a few of them, and also just give my personal view on to why I'm voting the way I am. It's no secret that I voted against this item at our prior meeting, and I intend to vote against it at this meeting. The reason for that is, this is a rezoning of property from C1 to C2. As many folks in the audience stated, we are raising the intensity use of this property by doing that rezoning. At C1, it's a local, what's called local zoning, it allows for light commercial uses, I would say, is probably the best way to describe it, similar to the ones that we've seen there previously. There is a light commercial use north of this property, which is the daycare center in Farmington Hills. The remainder of this intersection, when you look at it, is residential and public land. It's parks, it's a golf course, and residential properties, including right at the corner, which is highly unusual at most corners throughout our city, to have residential right at the corner. When I look at this area, it's a very unique area in the sense of having so much open space. There's hundreds of acres of open land in the vicinity, and I'm also old enough to remember when many areas of the city were like this, but this really exists nowhere else in Livonia at this point. And if I stand at this intersection, I can go one mile in almost any direction to get access to a gas station, I can get access to a convenience store, I can get access to fast food restaurants, and many of those operate with extended hours. Not necessarily 24 hours, but extended hours. I drive through the intersection of Eight Mile and Newburgh daily, I live right near there, and when I stop at that intersection, I say to myself, do I need gas at this corner? Do I need a convenience store at this corner? Do I need fast food dining at this corner? 24 hours a day. And the answer to that, for me, is no. So rezoning the property to C2 for those intended uses is increasing the intensity use, and I don't think it's, it's appropriate at this location. I know Sheets is very eager to find a location in our city that works for the community, for everyone involved, and for themselves. And I think there are some good locations around the area that could support this type of business, that are either currently zoned to the appropriate zoning, or, or also available on the market at this time. Some maybe not available on the market at this time, but will be in the future. But whatever happens with this vote, I just wanna remind the audience that we are making a recommendation to City Council. This is not the final step. As Mr. Long said, there's many more steps for this to go. So for any residents interested in this, I do suggest that you continue to follow the process as it moves forward. City Council will hold their own public hearing, you'll be able to speak at that, and they're ultimately gonna make the decision on this. I do wanna thank the petitioner for coming and giving his presentation tonight. I also wanna thank the audience for being respectful through this meeting, and that's the end of my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
All right, we have a motion on the table that has been supported. Mr. Secretary, if you could please read the roll.
Mr. Droes.
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. De Naro.
Yes.
Mr. Long. It'd be me first. Oh, I'm sorry, Chair Wilshaw. I vote no. Mr. Long.
No, I would go to you next, Sam, I'm the chair.
Then you? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm all screwed. Aye, Mr. Long.
Votes nay, but we have passed three to two. So this will go on to City Council with the recommending approval, and we wish you luck with your project. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I am going to pass the gavel back to Mr. Wilshaw to attend to the next-
Please, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, for that. There is one item left on our agenda, approval of the minutes of the 1,220th public hearing and regular meeting, is there a motion to approve? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
This is by Kara Magno and De Naro. Is there any objection to showing five on that?
No, that's fine.
Mr. De Naro and Mr. Droes-
Can we show five?
Miss De Naro and Mr. Droes were not present at the meeting, but, so if we can-
If we show three out of the five, we would still have a quorum.
Okay.
So we'll show three, three-o.
We can show three out of the five. So we got Long? Long, myself, and you?
And Kara Magno.
Kara Magno and Wilshaw. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And De Naro and Droes don't, don't vote? They just abstain.
Yeah, that's right.
They'll abstain. So is there any other business that could be for the commission? If not, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Supported by?
I can't hear anything.
Motion to adjourn.
Kara Magno, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Kara Magno, all right, we have, we're gonna go with Long and Kara Magno on a motion to adjourn. If there's no objection, we'll show five to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, and I do wanna wish, or thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to the community tonight. We will adjourn the meeting at 8:03 PM. Good night, Livonia.
Thank you.